First on our agenda is approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Motion to approve by the thirty minutes.
Motion made by Pippinger, second by Evans. Any discussion? Pro call.
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Diddy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is approval of reports of office. Motion made by Pippinger, second by Davis. Any discussions? Pro call. Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Diddy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have approval of notaries. And we have two. Our first one is James Robert Maples of First Volunteer Bank. And next is Elaine Lacy for the Ford School, which is here in Benton.
My motion approved, two and all.
Second.
Motion made by Brooks, second by Pippinger. Any discussion?
Yes. Are we going to go by the rules that's on the paper?
What did they miss?
It says it must be signed seven days prior to the meeting.
Is this one of the two guys?
Yes, and it's been like I ever sent for start of these meetings.
This is one from Magnin, this got seven days on it too.
I was told when I took office that I could handle it after the other meeting, so.
Well, that's what they've been doing.
Any more discussion?
Just a little follow up, let's see. The seven days is handwritten, is this state code or is this something? Because I don't remember it being adopted. Is this just a state regulation?
Those are the forms that I had since I took office.
But you know where you had that seven on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, since the court, you've got to have it seven days prior to the meeting. Did you have it?
I say go ahead and make an exception, please do, and maybe Jeff write a little reminder in the paper.
I mean, that's the rule when they came in my office, I want to present them to you in two or seven days. But I was told that I could bring them to the night of the meeting regardless of when it were printed in, so.
I'll be honest with you, I never noticed that seven on there.
No.
And I'm assuming that's one that had been used in the office and just recopied over and over.
But if that's what y'all were telling me I need to do, I would get it from here on out, but.
I think we'll just wait and look and see if it's a state law requirement, and if it's not, let them live where they've been doing it, and have them made the meeting.
Okay, I'll find out.
I mean, that's, you know, if it's not state law, then there's no sense in telling people that.
Already kind of set a presence for it anyway. You're going to uphold it or not?
If I'm going to uphold it, I will go in and take off those sheets.
They've been having that by making talk back in the middle. Like I said, I never noticed seven day on there.
Any more discussion? Pro call. Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Diddy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is our budget meeting, our budget amendments. We have a few of those. First, we have line three, four, five, two, zero of restricted for chance re for eight sixteen over into line five, three, four, zero, zero, dash, seven, zero, nine for data processing equipment. Next, we have three, four, five, one, zero for jailhouse work, jailworkhouse for three thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars forty-seven cents into line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, two, three, zero, dash, three, three, six of maintenance and repair. Next, we have three, four, five, two, five restricted four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars into line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, two, three, zero, dash, four, nine, nine, other supplies. This one is four, four, one, seven, zero miscellaneous refund of one thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seven cents into line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, two, three, zero, dash, one, eight, seven of overtime. Next, we have four, six, nine, eight, zero other grant of two thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars into line five, six, five, zero, zero, dash, one, nine, six in service training. Four, six, two, one, zero law enforcement training for three thousand six hundred dollars into line five, four, one, one, zero, dash, one, four, zero. And that is share salary supplements. Next is line five, three, one, zero, zero, dash, four, nine, nine other supplies of seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents into line five, three, one, zero, zero, dash, three, three, four maintenance agreements. Next is one, zero, one, dash, three, nine, zero, zero, zero general fund of three thousand four hundred dollars into five, one, nine, zero, zero, dash, three, three, one for legal services. Five, one, six, zero, zero, dash, seven, zero, nine data processing equipment of two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents into five, one, six, zero, zero, dash, three, four, nine printing stationery and forms. Then we have five, two, four, zero, zero, dash, three, four, nine printing forms of six hundred dollars into five, two, four, zero, zero, dash, seven, zero, nine into data processing equipment. Five, four, four, two, zero, dash, three, three, eight of rescue maintenance and repair of two hundred and seventy dollars over into five, four, four, two, zero, dash, one, nine, six rescue training. Three, four, five, one, zero restricted general government of fourteen hundred dollars into five, one, nine, zero, zero, dash, three, three, six of maintenance and repair. And last, we got three, four, five, one, zero from the reserve fund, the jailworkhouse of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars into five, four, one, one, zero, dash, three, three, eight of the maintenance and repair.
I like most of the three. What was that, twenty-seven, two? What was your thought here?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, two, thirty?
Twenty-five through thirty-five does not include that last one she read, just so you're aware.
Thirty-four then.
No, I mean thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six would be that last one.
The one for twenty-seven thousand is the one from number twelve on our budget amendment for the hot water heater at the jail. Any comment? It's this page.
Like, we ended up tonight. We put the hot water heater in, thank you, we've got to put a budget amendment for it. So I guess we'll skip that one. And the hot water heater phases, for the best sooner, we'll go back and do the budget amendment. Is that right, John?
Yeah.
So we'll do that.
So they're twenty-five through thirty-five. Yeah. Motion to approve. Wake up the questions.
Second.
Motion made by Pippinger to do twenty-five through thirty-five and second by Davis. Any discussion?
Yes. Number one-on-one, number twenty-five. Thirty-four, five, twenty, chance report, Chris.
Yes.
That is the designated reserve fund for security workhouse general courts.
No.
Reserve fund, five, twenty?
No, it shares, I mean, that number, that may be it for that as well.
Right.
But that's not where this is coming from. This is coming from just chance report. Reserve for just chance report.
Thirty-four, five, twenty?
Yes.
I thought that whole catch had been, they had that committee.
Thirty-four, five, twenty is like five different accounts, all in one.
But they would have to make this committee on that.
No.
When do they have to make this committee on five, twenty?
Only when it's reserved for courtroom security.
Only when it's a security.
This is reserved for chance report.
Okay. That's clear, that part.
Any more discussion?
Is, uh, are you including those two budget amendments we got without a number on them?
Yeah, they're one-on-one.
What is the legal services for?
What was your number on those two, please?
Uh, the legal service one that Mr. Woody's asking about is number thirty-four.
And what number is that?
Thirty, thirty-four is the number.
And the other one's thirty-five?
Yes. And then the other one for that we just left out was the thirty-six. So we didn't include it.
Did you, did you see what that legal service one for?
Prevent, prevent all the juice that's coming?
Because we keep texting our attorney.
We're going to have some attorney fees turned in for reviews, multiple depositions and at least two, possibly three pending verbal cases. Although I'm not sure that one is still pending. And there's not enough money in the line from, I talked to Chris, to cover it when it comes in. So to prevent having a shortfall, requested that may be transferred in. If it is not expended, it will fall back into the fund balance. It should be enough to cover it the rest of the year. Depending on what, maybe this year's coming. If any others outstanding legal, this coming. Now, I think maybe is it covered by this line or they had it there? There's that, there's that.
Any more discussion? Pro call. Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Diddy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is natural resources of Brooks.
Yep. Angelo, I want to thank you exactly right time. This, what, don't bother you, this River agenda?
Yes, sir.
This, it's just something, it's a good time when you brought in. Dewey's going to bring yours up tonight.
Okay.
This was, uh, well, I've got this on here for several different reasons. One, I believe it's the opinion of the overwhelming majority of public county residents concerning Oakwood River. Two, it's tonight, the resolution is stapled for something coming up next month with the grounds committee needs to meet with attorney from Chattanooga. They said he'd come to our committee meeting to find an issue and there'd be no charge up front. This is back to me today. Three, I mean, I've talked to, the issue is, of course, other counties, you know, claiming our river and natural resources. I mean, I know some publicity is good, but it's getting to the point where I've had business owners tell me in Polk County that they have people come here rapping and cause these publications. Here's one, if everybody can see, Bradley Essential. See those cordyceps on the front, rats and all. They're actually, when they plan their trips, they're Googling lodging and dining in Bradley or Hamilton County. They have no ideas even here. And, you know, they're making the plans based off this stuff and Polk County's getting overlooked a lot as far as sales tax or any money spent. I think land's doing a lot better job so far at getting the word out about Polk County. But this resolution just step one or two, and there'll be more on the agenda next month when the time base switch. That is for good.
Brooks, you passing resolutions, eh?
I give you. I'm sorry, I thought it planned. Never mind. I thought it took me, John. Resolution, one, I say it's play one, three, twenty-one? Play first one or not? Three, one, twenty-one, I'm sorry. Whereas the governor and body of Polk County, Tennessee, understands the important impact that's natural beauty and resources to the economics of the county, the state and surrounding areas which benefit the county's natural resources. And whereas the legislative body of Polk County is aware that its primary work industry comes from agriculture, land and water usage. And whereas the commission has been recently reminded of this issue and forgetfulness from some advertisements and publications using and promoting the beauty of Polk County in conjunction with other surrounding areas, but not identifying as a resource as those of Polk County. And whereas even the U.S. Forest Service disregards Polk County by putting its headquarters office representing Cherokee National Forest, which makes up fifty-two percent of Polk County and a county adjoining Polk, which is none of the national forests in it. And whereas it is deemed proper by the commission to ensure that the county receives its full recognition for the part it plays in Tennessee's history, local economics and agriculture. Now therefore be resolved by Polk County Commission meeting in regular session. At the Polk County Courthouse in Bitter Tennessee, this eighteenth day of March, 2021, that the following information be made available to the citizens of Polk County and beyond. Polk County was established in eighteen thirty-nine and was named in honor of Governor and President James K. Polk. It contains over fifty Christian churches and has a rich history of agriculture, farming and cotton mining. The county has four primary rivers which provide a wealth of fishing and hunting experiences along the raft and kayak and tubing for families and tourists to enjoy. One of these rivers, the Connaughtsoga, is the only river in Tennessee that's not part of the Mississippi, Tennessee or Cumberland River systems. Another of the rivers is the Ocoee, which is a continuation of the DeCoe River of Georgia. Bears its name at the beginning of the Tennessee State Line and Copper River in Polk County, Tennessee, and empties into the Hiwasi River in Polk County, Tennessee, making Polk County the only home of the Ocoee River, which also was the crown jewel of nineteen ninety-six Olympic whitewater events. And even though the payment and lieu of taxes by the federal government does not compare to the economic boost that developed rural industrial land use, we the people of Polk County make the best of what we have and enjoy making the county one of the best places to live on earth. Please take this to heart. We are Polk County, we live and strive here and welcome all, but we will not be taken for granted.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Pippinger, second by Davis. Any discussion?
Chairman Brooks, in writing about that in the future, if you would.
She's chairman.
Chairman, I speak with you chairperson, but chairman, in nineteen ninety-six, we had the Olympics. Channel three news was in Parksville Lake and put it as Bradley County, Tennessee.
Oh, it happens.
And I would like for Parksville Lake to be involved in the wording of this as well with the rivers, because I remember seeing the banners Bradley County had hanging up twenty-five years ago. Being on the river for twenty-five years makes me sick. But I would just ask, if you would, add the wording of Parksville Lake, because that was on the national news.
It's a, I mean, it's funny you mention it, but irony, he specializes in similar this one's going to come meet with. He's from Hamilton County, and I explained to him our situation, and after I did, even he thought the Ocoee River was in Bradley County. And he lives in Hamilton County, I mean, he's lived there all his life.
The granola bars at Little Debbie McKee Bakery had for years, had a picture of the back of the waterfall, was go fourth creek on the Oakway River.
It was on the, uh.
It was on the back of the boxes. That's just, I mean, I've seen it done, and I just, I like the wording to be specific, to try to stick it back to these people, because they've made a good living off our county.
Oh, yeah, for years and years, and I believe, out of fourteen years on the commission, I believe this is one thing that ninety-nine point nine percent of our residents all agree on, which is right. But I don't care about your background, politics, I believe everybody in the county agrees on this subject. I've never seen anything that's one-sided, and something's maybe been done for a long time. And then, you know, you get this stuff coming out, it's getting through season, and I believe this come out, it come out the Cleveland banner. Bradley Essential.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's just time to put some of this behind us and make sure, you know, we can't probably stop them from using the name, but, you know, I believe it's our job as commissioners to make sure the county gets every dime we've got, kind of, from everybody. I've said it's just step one, there'll be more coming next month.
Commissioner Brooks, I notice, just want to point out, I notice you mentioned the national forest being located over in Bradley. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if anybody's ever done this, but if you Google Cherokee National Forest, when you go to the U.S., well, national forest page, in their description, there is a note in the search engine that, just note that this office is not actually in the national forest, it's right there in the description before you click on the page.
So it says in Bradley County?
It does say it's in Bradley County, it just says it's not actually in the national forest. It never mentions that the national forest is in Polk County, I don't think anywhere on that page.
And Polk County's not getting a dime with taxes off that building. No, that Bailey may rent.
You got a lot of nice vehicles out front though. Government vehicles, all clean, doesn't look like it'd be in the forest, but.
The only hill I've seen in Bradley County is a landfill. I mean, they might be a big one, biggest one I know. Maybe they can market it somehow.
Well, and they do have two Walmarts.
Two, they've got Walmart.
Yeah, they can put on their tourism page.
And a landfill.
Yep. And there's a lot of natural beauty floating around down there.
Craig Brooks?
Uh, yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Diddy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Woody?
No.
Next, we have state parks by Esq.
I have with us tonight Angelo from the state parks, and we'll talk with us a couple of minutes about things that are on his heart.
Can I stand? I don't know, there's been one. Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm the park manager over the Oakway and the Hiwasi. So I wanted to take the time here to answer any questions anybody had. One of the things I got was I got a lot of complaints at this past year about the Whitewater Center, about certain roads in the forest, and we are not the national forest, we're state parks, we're a different entity. So what I wanted to do was just come and just offer my services and just let everybody know, you know, just if there's any questions or any issues or things that, what our jurisdiction is and what we run and what our responsibilities are. Because one of the big panics was when this COVID stuff first hit, everybody was like, hey, y'all have got the whole highway bogged down over the Whitewater Center because it's closed, y'all need to hurry up and go open it. I was like, that is not ours, that is the Whitewater, that's the, that's the Forest Services, that's a different deal. We patrol twenty miles of river along the Oakway and Hiwasi. The Hiwasi was the first state scenic river, the first one in Tennessee to be recognized as something that was so beautiful that it needed to be kept. The Oakway from the, the top where they raft down is ours, the water park, but the Whitewater Center is not. So it's a little bit confusing and intermingled, but none of those gravel roads are ours, none of that is ours. Nancy Ward's graveside is ours, Sugarloaf is ours, the Oakway that goes below Sugarloaf down to Nancy Ward is not ours, but Nancy Ward is. So I just wanted to clarify some of that stuff, and you do see us in the national forest because we have to go through there sometimes, and a lot of times we're the nearest law enforcement to help kind of ease the, ease the county and ease the Forest Service, because sometimes they're just, there's not even anyone there because they only have one law enforcement officer there.
They're over in Brad.
Well.
Their office in Bradley.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make, make anybody aware, if anyone has any questions. So I got here fourteen years ago, I thought I'd be here a couple of years and then go see something else. I'm ex-military, I wanted to travel, and I just couldn't find anything more beautiful. And I've dedicated my life to trying to educate your children as to the wealth that they have and grandchildren, because this county is amazing. The resources we have are amazing, the people here are amazing. I've been on record several times saying the mountains are beautiful, the rivers are beautiful, but one of our most valuable and underappreciated resources is the people that we have here. The culture we have here is also something very unique and special that you just do not see around the world very often anymore. And so, we're big on education, we're really big on growing tourism, getting people to come and see what's here, take advantage of the places to stay, I really try to show everyone where all these waterfalls are and things like that. I, I think one of the things that I did see, and this, I don't know if this is something that we can all work together and come up with ideas, is that I went to Alaska several years ago, and if anyone's ever been, when you're in Alaska, even though it's a gigantic state, it's two of Texas, they have this really interesting way of sign, you just feel like you can find your way around it. We have treasures that nobody can even find, that people who live here don't even know where they are, because there's just no signage, there's no, there's nothing, there's no real clear, where do you go when you get there? That's part of what we're working with, with the county as well, to try to get part of that TVA to work together on that, because I would love to have a place where you stop and you say, I'm here, where do I need to go? And we can sit down and say, what are you looking for, and just show you Polk County. So we're working on more video, more media to get out, to show people these things. But I just wanted to, just, I'm Angelo, I'm at the office, I'm easy to get ahold of. I've given almost everybody on this planet my personal phone number. And people don't seem to mind calling me at one o'clock in the morning if they hit a deer to ask me questions, which is not my jurisdiction, but it's okay. So I just want, if anyone has any questions with me, anything like that from this committee, any commission, anybody here in general, I just wanted to go ahead and make myself available and just, just clarify some of that.
Okay, a couple, real quick ones.
Okay, a couple, real quick ones. Up at, on the, on 411, up at Hawassee Estates, the Put-in up there at the river.
At 411?
Yeah, at 411. Last year, the cars were just lined.
That is not ours. That's TWRA.
Well, I mean, everybody asked that, too. It's our home.
That's TWRA, that's TWRA's, once it goes to that bridge, that becomes TWRA's, that's not ours. But on the other end of it, we are trying, I think, honestly, this is one of those things where I really think everybody built this up and it was going to be this really nice thing, and then COVID hit, and everybody in the world wanted to go outside, and a whole lot of people had never been outside before, so you just got a bunch of people that just, and, you know, there's a hundred trails, and I saw a thousand people at one trail, and nobody.
Knew what the rest of them.
Yeah, so I, I think that was a part, and this is a growing, water sports are growing, we're working with you guys, we're working with the rescue squad on trying to ease some of that traffic, on trying to ease some of those rescues.
So TWRA is also the one that controls, like, at the parking areas and things where the, where people are putting in the rafts and their boats and all that?
At G Creek, it's ours.
Okay.
At Reliant, it's ours. You go above that, it's Forest Services, below that is TWRA.
Okay, because we, we, we was having several incidents, and that's why.
I'm aware, I've been reading, I'm aware of those, and we're, we're going to do whatever we can, that's just not our jurisdiction. But we're going to do what we can to help and try to be a part of, but be a part of the team, but it's not our jurisdiction, so.
I think y'all do a great job, I hate y'all getting confused with Forest Service. The efficiency between y'all and the Forest Service is different, daylight and dark. One way everybody can tell who's responsible for a place, the State Parks or the Forest Service, same as why I can tell them, just look, see if it's been maintained or not. If it is State Parks, though, if it's not, Forest Service, though, I mean, it's just, it's that simple. I don't, do they even maintain this crew in Polk County anymore, the Forest Service?
Honestly, that's not my jurisdiction. I will say that I really appreciate that, we really take pride in our job, we realize the importance of when we get gas or when our, our people here, our locals, our community come to use our resources, we want them to be tip-top, we want people to be informed, we want everybody to be comfortable and feel like their resources are taken care of. So I really appreciate that and take it as a huge compliment.
Well, we, last year, and we, in it, we didn't name y'all, we named TWRA in a resolution about the boat ramps, but I think we kind of accidentally drug yous in the middle of it, and it wasn't y'all, it's TWRA that it was meant for, you know, but State Parks do, they, I mean, whatever their responsibility is, took care of it, and the people noticed too, but the Forest Service, goodness, it's, I hate to say too much, but.
My boss is the governor, they got a different boss, so I just, you know.
They really, they, did they turn you down on your offer to run the Gwen Springs Campground? Or was the State Parks turned down?
There were some technicalities in it apparently not meeting their standards, and so they could, basically, this, the Forest Service never gives anything away, what they do is they rent it out. So you don't, they don't just say, well, you can have it, they basically say you can rent it out, and they were saying based on their erosion and this, that, and the other, that it was just not suitable, so.
I don't mean to interrupt, but to add a little bit to Commissioner Davis's concern about 411, we have had through the chamber some discussions with Southeast Tennessee Tourism, and there are some options on the table for possibly some co-op funding to assist with some dumpsters, some signage and things down there. We can't make room for more parking because there's just not land, but that would help with some of the, the issues that were seen a lot, and, you know, some things we're going to have to work in conjunction with Sheriff's Agency and different things, but, but there are some discussions we're having with Southeast Tennessee Tourism about that area in particular, and I'm down at Patty, too.
Yeah, we can't afford a fence, like, put up signs since private property starts right here, and pull the toilets and trash cans, that take care of it.
Well, we're looking at some of the toilet facilities, like, if you go at the telecom, like what they have at Baby Falls, you may know what they're called, they're, they're permanent structures, but there's no electricity or anything in them, and so there's possibly some funding or some co-op opportunities for something like that, which will be a big help.
Well, it should be all on TWRA, because State Parks, the county, as a whole, the Sheriff's Office, none of us get a dime from public registration. You know, TWRA's want to collect some money, and I think it should be one hundred percent their responsibility to the financial part of it, you know, they're just, I won't get back into it, they just came here and set all this up, and said, all right, boys, it's y'all's, take care of it, and we're going to collect every dime we get off of it, you know, that's basically, and I think the financial burden should lay on TWRA, all good. Did anybody ever talk to them again? Did Sheriff ever talk to them, Kobe? He's talking to Mike Bell one time.
I'm not sure if, if that's happened, but now I know in reference to the boat ramps, there was a, we were assigned to extra patrol those boat ramps, including the one at Patty Bridge, the one on 411 at the Hawassee, and the TWRA boat ramp across the Two Rivers Campground, and we would do those patrols so many times a day.
And it, it's good y'all do, but at the same time, there's other needs in the county.
That's correct. I did see one TWRA agent, I did meet him at one of boat ramps one day, and myself and one of our narcotics detectives made, there were several arrests, I think, over that time at those areas because of the amount of traffic.
It's very under, and I know that day that we had that big, oh, we need Dean, the TWRA guy, I mean, which he, I mean, he was very nice and everything, I mean, he, he said, we're just so understaffed that it's unreal. Well, I don't know, that might be one hundred percent the truth, but I've been a hundred percent lie, I don't have clues, I don't know how many of them there are, but all I know is if they ain't enough, they need the people, because it's not our county's place to serve the deputies to patrol it, and they, like Greg said, they set it all up and they brought it all into it, and then here you are.
And then they got their hand, they all like, want the cheese.
And it's just, you know, and, and I guarantee you, and I don't mean this to be in a negative way, but I promise you, there's no telling what percent, and Kobe might even shed a little light on it, is out of town, out of county, out of, out of, out of, the worst of the problems.
During the times that we were actually from the boat ramps back in the summer, I, I did notice that a lot of the registrations on vehicles were from out of county.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The day that, that we had the big thing about the hoop law there, it, I went around and I counted, and over at Patty, there was sixty cars, and there was four Polk County cars. So that's how, so that's why I'm saying, I mean, and, you know, I realize that's not our river, we can't control it, and, but they made it, so they need to take care of it, they made the landlings, they made it all happen, so, you know, they need to step up to the plate.
I do want to address one thing with you, if you don't care.
Yes, sir.
We do all appreciate.
No, but I'm sorry.
There's one thing, and I know you're here representing State Parks. Since you've been here, your name's come up quite a bit in the communities.
I'm only responsible for probably half of it, I just.
You've been involved in a lot of committees, a lot of groups, a lot of organizations, and a lot of things out there, I think you were teaching youth boxing for a while.
I was, I also coached the high school wrestling team.
You've done a lot in the community yourself that has nothing to do with, with State Parks, per se, and I just wanted to let you know, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have questions out here?
Where's your office?
We're at, we are at G Creek, which is pushed up on Spring Creek Road, that's our office.
In Polk County.
In Polk County. I know that.
Have y'all got maps of the backgrounds and?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We have an incredible map that National Geographic made that you can come and pick up, and it's, it's what we use for our rescues, so it's, you will have the same map we have, we don't have anything better if you come pick one up. And we can, we're all so happy to sit down with you and go over trails and circle stuff with you and just help you plan out whatever adventures you want to get into as well.
Great, good news.
Thank you.
I just drove in from Mississippi yesterday, and I drove around exploring the office today, rammed into one of y'all's guys, he gave me a good forty-five minutes, told me everything that I didn't need to know, amazing, solid guys, and y'all are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, we try, so, thank you. We're full of people who love this place, Howard Deverell and Chavis England have been here, this, I think this is like either their first or second job, it's the only jobs they've ever had, pretty much, as they were sixteen, has been here. One of our Rangers, Adam Holt, he, he came here in high school with his soccer team, and he made it, his mission in life was to get here and become a Ranger, and we just, he just finally got the transfer to us two years ago. We have Jeremy Sorensen's our new Ranger, and he hiked the Appalachian Trail, and somebody interviewed him, and in this big magazine spread from exactly three years ago, he said, I'm going to become a park ranger and come back to this area, and I'll be darned if he didn't. So we've got a, Jillian, she's been here forever, Roberts, we've got Brad Handy, we've got a lot of great Rangers who have been here, they're passionate about this place, this isn't just a job for them or somewhere, this is something they fought to get to, and this, like, Howard and Trav, Trav, the trees they planted are a hundred feet tall now, I mean, they remember planting them in the ground, they've been here that long, so we're really, really appreciative of the support we give, and we just want to be able to support you guys as thoroughly as possible, so. If that's all, then I'm going to make my way out because I'm going to make shit, and I got to go back to doing stuff, so. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have convenience center issues by Edmonds.
We had a couple issues out there at the dump, we're about got them all worked out, so just going to pass on it.
Make the table next month or is it?
I don't know, we'll put it back on there, but.
Next on our agenda is our constable resolution. We, we don't have it yet, but we're looking into making where constables just get our warrants, that way they can pick them up and do them, but we don't have that one yet, so we're going to table it and do our research on it. Next, we have our Royal Businesses Development Grant Resolution.
Which one? The RDG, RBDG grant, it says there, this is just a resolution to let us go forward and kind of obtain the twenty thousand dollars, so, you want to read that, Samantha?
Sure. I'll do. Whereas the members of the Polk County Commission Board deems it desirable and vested in the interest of the county to apply for the Royal Business Development Grant and the amount of twenty thousand dollars from the USDA Royal Development. Whereas the funding is to assist with the completion aspect of the county show barn located in the county seat event in Tennessee, whereas the show barn hosts multiple, multiple events annually, affording an excellent opportunity to promote local businesses, be resolved by the members of the Polk County Commission Board on this eighteenth day of March two thousand twenty that the county executive has the authority to execute any related documents as required.
This document's required for the application to sell? Correct, this is to go forward, to keep going through this application process that we've been going through in the office for a couple of months now, Patricia?
Yeah.
This is the next step. Is this a second grant? Are there two grants right now for County Council or Show Barn? This is about one, we got one. This is? This is the twenty thousand dollars, there's four thousand, four hundred, five dollars and seventy-two cents of county match to get the twenty thousand, so it'll be a total of twenty-four thousand, four oh five seventy-two.
So we got kind of four thousand?
Four oh five seventy-two.
And then we had to put about eight in it from that other grant?
Yes.
Roughly, this is all roughly.
Yes, sir.
So this is going to have us a total of about twelve thousand county money in the show barn.
This is where the Buildings and Grounds Committee, when we met the other day about building a lighting project, in which you all had asked in that Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, get Troy Gentry or somebody equivalent, Troy met me out there a couple days later, and looked at everything as part of getting, if we have to have it put out the bid, which Troy said that he thinks that it's going to be real close to that bid limit, but if it is, then Troy said that he would help us throughout the RFP to turn that out, or that bid for the, the electrical of the show barn. That's the majority of what we're trying to get done, if you electricity, we're. And this will allow us to actually file fourth, you agree? Correct. This is the. The grant has not been approved. We've not received it yet. No, sir. I make the motion we follow through this resolution. A second, what number would it be?
Three two.
Three. Three six twenty-one.
Three two. Three two. Three two twenty-one. Question made by Woody, second by, is it you, bud?
Very good, very first.
Uh, Dewey, second. Any discussion? Real call. Larry Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Douglas?
Yes.
Dewey S. Monks?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantlum?
Yes.
And James Woody?
Yes.
Next, we have our litter grant resolution.
You all have today, where's Will, okay, Will Wallace is your new litter grant coordinator, and in the resolution that you have before you, this is where we go back into this contract again with our litter grant. Will has gone through some of the different programs before the resolution was read, and we'd like to kind of give you the brief update. I know Walter's here with the Polk County News, I will say this, this past weekend, and I don't want to get into great detail, but we have had another illegal dump, and in which Walter brought towards our attention, and we'll be turning that over once again to the Forest Service for a full prosecution, we hope to follow the dump in Shooter's Creek, Will was a part of that, that, as we went there and cleaned that up that day, that had, that prosecution or time in court's been delayed till April, but that's just a little brief on that, but I'd like for Will to kind of lay out some of the things that he's been doing as your new litter grant coordinator.
Good evening, my name is William Wallace, and I'm Will, and I'm your new litter grant coordinator, director for the Polk County and the great state of Tennessee. I think we're going to go a little bit of a different direction besides litter cleanup, we're really going to go after trying to stop litter before it actually happens. A lot of, a lot of stuff that has not been done in the past is tarpen or ticket kind of thing, and that would save a lot of trash from, you know, being on the roadways and stuff like that, and that could be enforced at the dump or, or through some other agencies and stuff like that. In the last seven weeks, I am new, so be gentle with me here, in the last seven weeks, we've investigated, you know, illegal dumping of five different areas on private property, and unfortunately, I haven't had to say no to, you know, different people. Anybody that calls my office with trash-related problems, I just don't tell them on the phone, I actually go out and meet them and talk to them in person. I've had a lot of calls on, like, needles on the road, hypodermic needles, just different kinds of, you know, stuff like that. We've cleaned up probably twelve miles in the last seven day, seven weeks of, of just roadway trash, my budget is limited on fuel and, and things like that. I am in need of a truck, right now I'm working out of my car, so it's hard to get garbage into the vehicle, you know, I can take five bags or whatever, but, you know, ninety percent of the trash is cans and, you know, plastic bottles, so the cans that we want to collect, we also want to take down and recycle and give to, like, the boys and the girls clubs and all that kind of stuff, so I do separate trash from other trash. Also, what I do is when I find bags of trash on the highway or, or on the road, the highway is really not my jurisdiction, it's the county roads that I actually am responsible for, I go through them and I look for, you know, names, numbers, addresses, pill bottles, so you name it, I don't understand why people throw away trash on the road and they have their name in it, and I have, you know, gone through. And I have, you know, gone through dozens and dozens of bags of trash, found names and numbers, and either confronted the person. I've had a gentleman that has brought me a, just a piece of mail. And he brought it into my office and said that, you know, this is litter, and I agreed with him. But I have to kind of pick my battles too on what I charge somebody with the litter, a five hundred dollar fine or whatever, that could have come out of their car or whatever. I definitely am going to prosecute as much as I can. That's a difference of stance from the last litter director. I think he was a little bit more lenient. I agree that with Angelo, it was an awesome speech having him sit here and talk about how beautiful our roads are. And, you know, we want to keep that up, especially our side roads that are places that are, you know, different tourist areas that no one knows about. So, we want to make sure we keep those clean. Mr. Hatch was correct that on Sunday, I got an email from Walter here about a trash dump on Benton Springs Road. So, I went up to locate it and found that it was halfway in between the National Forest and Polk County. So, I did go down there and bag probably, I would say, at least thirty different diapers. A lot of them were open, so I was walking around in feces most of the afternoon, being able to bag it up. And we're meeting with Ken from the Forest Service, and we are definitely going after these people. I found probably about twelve different letters mailed, whether it's medical or car insurance-wise, of three different people. So, that makes six different people in the last seven weeks that we're gonna take to federal court and really make an example out of people. I think shaming is gonna work really well so that people know when they throw bags out or bags come out of their car without a tarp, that they will be actually confronted with the material. And either a civil warrant will be taken out for their name or for them to go to court, or we will put it in the newspaper and be able to, you know, go from there. I think Walter and I have a really good working relationship about that as far as advertising and stuff like that. I do have my first litter pickup, volunteer litter pickup, that I'm really excited about. It's on April third, and it's with the Chill Howie Middle School, Adopt a Middle School, and it's the Beta Club. So, I'm really excited about that. They actually want to clean up Olafah Highway four eleven, and so I'm working with them. We're gonna get them trash bags, vests, gloves, try to get them a little pickup stuff, a little pickup sticks. I don't have those, but I have the rest. I have ordered some of that kind of stuff, so we'll be able to do that. They've also indicated they wanted to adopt that highway as part of their, you know, Beta Club to go forward and stuff like that. So, I am inquiring to Nashville about, you know, how we get that done and be able to push that program of adopt a highway so that, you know, a lot of trash and a lot of stuff can be picked up by local people and, you know, volunteers and stuff like that. We've had a lot of good, good results from, you know, local people. I am inheriting COVID, so, you know, a lot of the trash wasn't picked up last year. So, it's, it does have a lot to do with where we are right now. So, I do have a daunting task ahead of me. So, with that, I'd like to ask, anybody have any questions or?
So, when the COVID is over, are the inmates gonna resume picking up bike crews too?
Well, I took the actual class for the inmates about three weeks ago, and at that point, I did ask. I couldn't really inquire about the jail and COVID in the jail or anything like that, but I did take the class to be able to check the inmates out. Now, at that point, they said this week, yes, you can, but that subject should change to be able to do, you know, what they can do and where they could go and all that kind of stuff. I know the city has been working, you know, the inmates, you know, in their job and stuff like that. So, I really think it's starting to wind down within the next two or three months. I think we'll really be able to get out there and make a big difference.
Well, like, well, Jackie's dad, he takes care of the firewood and the mow.
Yes. Does a great job.
And we have a separate crew that just picked up bike crews.
Yes, sir.
Are they gonna continue? Are they gonna come back yet?
Yeah, I guess. Well, that's what I've taken, taken the inmate class already to get that over with so that as soon as I get the AOK and I get a vehicle to be able to pick up the trash, we're out there at least two days a week.
So, you're, that's what my question, you're gonna be taking place of that. We're not gonna have you and a couple inmates in addition to the old crew too.
Will, you tell Sheriff's Office Crew to done that job. He's asking you if that crew's coming back in addition?
You would have to ask the Sheriff's Department about that. I do have a limited budget of fuel, which is only three thousand dollars. So, three thousand dollars is only gonna give you so far. So, that's kind of why I was talking about more enforcement of trash. And when I have somebody that actually calls me from the community and says, "Hey, I've got a big bag of trash that's on the middle of the road," or a good example is three fourteen. You know, somebody dropped a bunch of trash off on three fourteen, and I go through every trash bag and I find names, numbers, and I will swear out warrants, and we will get tickets and fines from that.
Well, you've got your work cut out on enforcement because I would say eighty percent of our roadside garbage is from out of county people on the weekend.
Yes, sir.
And it's hard to get the word out then. So, you'll have to be...
Yes, sir. That's why I said a daunting task. You know, one of the things I can suggest, I don't know, this is just my observing of picking up trash myself, would be ninety percent of it's beer cans and alcohol. So, I know that roadblocks are done by, you know, state troopers and all that kind of stuff, but I would love to see a roadblock on Mountain View Road. I went and picked up a mile of trash on that, and I had like fifteen bags, huge garbage bags of just beer cans alone. And so, what people are doing is they're skirting the main highways and stuff like that and going down the, you know, regular. And if they would see something like that, that would be a deterrent. My option is to deter trash before it happens, is what I'm trying to get at. I might even stay at, you know, stay at the dump, just at the, at the beginning, just to remind people, hand out those state law that says you have to tarp it or you get a ticket for it, you know, or be able to have the folks that work at the dump be able, you know, to send something out or give something out that when they see someone that doesn't have anything tarp, you know. I did have a problem with that. A gentleman had tied down a bunch of insulation, and he was driving down the road, and little pieces of insulation were coming off. I got the call on that and turned around, and he got a little aggravated with me, and I reminded him that it was a tarp or ticket kind of situation. He didn't realize that he had to have a tarp over the insulation so it wouldn't blow away. Because it wasn't big pieces, it was just little pieces.
Is it tarp anywhere in the city streets?
Excuse me, sir?
Is there a tarp ordinance in the city?
It is. Tarp or, tarp or ticket is a statewide mandate that if you have gravel or if you have trash or any kind of, you know, any, really anything in the back of a truck or on a trailer, you have to put a tarp over it. That is, that is a state law, sir.
Even if it's in lines?
If it's in bags, it doesn't matter, whatever it is, you know, because the bags can fly out too. It has to be, and a lot of people actually are using mesh, you know, like to cover it, like netting. You can buy netting at, you know, Walmart or, you know, different places like that. I think, you know, just doing that program, actually enforcing that program is gonna make a big difference on losing trash out on the highway because a lot of people don't realize that they're actually coming out. I had a gentleman that I was following from Mountain View Road coming here to work the other day, and he was losing, you know, he went forty miles an hour on Highway four eleven just north of town, and he was losing cups and pieces of paper and all that kind of stuff. And in my car, I have actually a camera, and so I followed him to the dump and really nicely asked him, you know, there is a tarp or ticket law? And he's like, "No, no, no. I didn't lose any trash." And I just, you know, kindly pulled out my phone and showed him, you know, what, what was going on. And he turned around and said, "Yes, I'm very sorry. I will pick it up right away." And I drove back there an hour later, and it was all, you know, cleaned up and stuff like that. So, reminding for somebody at first is gonna be my priority, and then enforcing the situation is gonna be my number-one enforcement idea to be able to get out there. I'm really gonna go, I can promise you that. And as I said, we're after three more people on Monday, and it is for diapers in the National Forest, which is a big felony. And so, we're hoping April, the, the people in Shilvers Creek were backed down to April just because of COVID in the, in the federal courts and stuff like that. So, working with the Forest Service and Robbie Hatch's office, we're really actually, and Walter here too, you know, to get the word out and be maybe on the front page of the paper as much as I can is gonna get, you know, Polk County cleaned up. So, I'm excited about the job, and I really appreciate the opportunity. I do. Is there any more questions?
Let's say that you've got twenty percent of this allotted, allotted, this money that's allotted to this budget. Have you got any plans already set up to go to schools, give litter control prevention to them?
Yes, Mr. Woody. I actually break it up into different things. It's media education, public education, student education, like you're talking about. There's government education, and there's business education. A good example of business education is the folks down here at the red light at the gas station. I've talked to them once, and then I talked to them again, and I gave them ten days to clean it up, and that was like two weeks ago. So, I'm gonna have to go back and actually either talk to corporate. And they keep saying, "Oh, we paid someone to pick it up. It's just been raining or cold." So, now, the educational stuff for that, we do, we hire subcontractors for that, and he actually does a magic show and does litter magic shows and puppet shows and different things depending on what school and, you know, what grade it is and stuff like that on litter. I do have a lot of litter information. A lot of it wasn't purchased because the fair last year wasn't happening, and a lot of, or nothing was really done last year with the old administration as far as school because of COVID. So, this year, I'm really excited that if we can get through the summer and everything's all right, then we're back to full scale going into our businesses, going into our educational systems, our schools, and really, really, you know, going after it. And I've talked to this gentleman on the phone that we use, and he is state-certified to be able to teach litter, you know, about litter and, you know, instill it in young people's minds about how to get rid of it and not, you know, pollute our rivers or, you know, different areas and stuff like that. One of the problems with Shilvers Creek was that it was right on the creek, so that the diapers were leaching right into the river. So, those people are, you know, once the judge gets a hold of them, I hope that he prosecutes them, you know, at six months in prison and up to a fifteen thousand dollar fine. So, I really hope that, you know, that'll take care of that.
Madam Chair, I call for a reading of the resolution, please.
Okay. We are at Resolution three dash three dash twenty-one. Resolution authorizes the Polk County Executive to execute a contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and Polk County. Whereas to Section four, one dash two dash one, two, three TC, the Commissioner of Transportation is authorized to make grants to the counties for the purpose of funding programs for the collection of litter and trash along the county, state, and interstate roads and highways. And whereas Polk County has submitted an application to the department for the grant, four said that outlines a plan for collection of litter and trash. And whereas Polk County agrees to emphasize education for litter control and prevention and agrees to allocate twenty percent of the contract amount toward education. And whereas the department and the parties want to enter into a contract provided for the terms and conditions to govern the expenditures of the grant funds in the amount of four, forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Now, whereas it is resolved by the Polk County Board of Commissions that Polk County Executive can be authorized to sign the contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and Polk County this, this eighteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to approve is code three, code three, code three or four?
Three.
Code three, oh, three, twenty-one.
Motion made by Pippinger. Second thought, any discussions?
Yes, I had one more question before I cut off. How, do you, this fine money, how in fact is distributed?
I would have to get back to you on that. I, as I said, I am new, so I would have to, I believe it goes into the county as far as a five hundred dollar fine for littering. So, that's something I would have to get back to you on that, sir. I do not know that question. I would also like to tell everybody that I'm up on this floor in Office three oh nine. It's always open. I'm either in there or I'm out on the, on the road actually doing some things. So, and you're also willing, my phone number, I have a office phone number, and I also have a cell phone number that you're willing to, you're welcome to get and to call me at any time that you see litter or have a question or have, you know, a community or a person that wants to come and talk to you. So, and then has a complaint. I want all complaints. I need all complaints. I need to know where everything is. So, you know, that's one of the big ways I can resolve it. One of my biggest things is try to make everybody happy. As I said, I go and I've dealt with five different illegal dump sites on private property. I just don't want to turn around and say, "Sorry, I can't do anything on the phone," and hang up. I want to be able to say that person to their face. This is the rule. This is, there's one place that has four thousand tires that are on private property, and it would be over four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars to clean up. And, you know, we just don't have the money to be able to do that. I have no state funds or anything like that. So...
Thank you.
So...
Quick yes or no question?
Yes, sir.
Are you allowed to issue tickets?
At this time, no. It'd be the Sheriff's Department that I would have to call to be able to issue tickets. But I can do civil warrants.
Well, you've got the option, Cal, the Sheriff's Department. I have a ticket ready.
Yes. If I had, if I had it on video, what we do is we have trail cams also that I set up for illegal, you know, littering and stuff like that. But if I find a name and phone number in a trash bag, then what I do is I go to the Justice Center and swear a civil warrant on that person and take them in front of a judge and be able to render a five hundred dollar fine from that. So... So, I'm not, I'm not a law enforcement person that writes tickets actually, but if I have proof by camera video or by, you know, myself as far as, you know, a witness, then I can definitely do that. But I do swear, that's the, that's what I do is I'll go to, you know, the courthouse.
But you could use a bag if you find somebody's name in it. You might have more video of it, correct?
No, sir. Yeah. I, if, I've got mail right now that we're going with Ken Seymour with the National Forest, and it's covered in diaper stuff, and so I've got it all sorted out and...
So, the reason the county's not issuing five hundred dollar fines is because there are two rock solid cases that have been handled in federal court.
Yes, sir. Yes. And that's part of it. I'm not really allowed to go into the National Forest and pick up trash because they, they already have a crew for that. But I'm hoping to talk with Mr. Seymour and be able to say, "I would like to investigate stuff with you." Shilvers...
I guess my question, like ladies, throw the diapers out?
Yes, sir.
That same bag of garbage, let's say, on side of Federal Road, you know, off the federal land?
Yes, sir.
And they would get a five hundred dollar ticket, correct?
Oh, at least. Well, anything on federal land and diapers and stuff like that, that's a whole different story. That's...
The same garbage that's been thrown out in Old Ford on Old Federal Road.
Yes, sir. I would go through it, and I would document it by photographs. And as I go through it, I videotape it. I videotape and photograph everything so that there's no way they can actually say, "No, this is not, or I didn't do it," or "He put it in there." And then I would take that actual information and go to the court and, you know, swear out a civil warrant. It'd be served from the Sheriff's Department, and then we'd have our day in court. It'd be between me and that person standing in front of a judge, me proving the case that, yes, I found this in the bag. And then the judge would ask, "Well, how did it get there? Why was it there?" You know, and different stuff like that. So, I...
I think that would be the biggest deterrent about.
Yes. And to get, you know, how to even have a shame list, and not really shameless. That's not really a right way of saying it. But, you know, to be able to get in there, I think environmental terrorism, I don't know if y'all read that in the newspaper about seven weeks ago. That was an awesome article, and that was excellent to be able to get people out there. Of course, people went back and still did it, but it made a big difference. And I think, you know, a deterrent to be able to do stuff like that. So...
You said you picked up twelve miles already?
Well, each, each side is a mile. So, when I go through there, I can name off the roads that I've been out there. I've been out there on Benton Station Road, Mountain View Road, Stansberry Road, up in Farner, Oak Grove Road, Harrison Mill Road, Reynolds Bridge Road, Benton Springs, Runyon Road, which is up in Farner, and Shilvers Creek. Now, I'm not talking about that I actually walk three or four miles because legally standing is that I have no lights. I have nothing. This is picking up trash that is in large piles that I stop and pick up. I did not walk the actual, you know what I mean? I picked up, if there's a large area of trash, then I would pick that up. And then I would keep moving on, and that's different areas that, like trash bags that I found that I'd go through and, you know, kind of mull around and try to find, you know, names and numbers and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, I need a actual truck. I need lights. You know, I need to make it legal. If I got hit by a car and it's just my car flashers on it or caused an accident, then, you know, it'd kind of be on the county to be able to say, "Hey, you know, I wasn't doing it correctly."
If you're willing to have a sentencing made directly after this, we'll continue this. We're running out of time.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to talk so much.
I mean, would that be, I mean, the first won't be much more discussion, no action. We just have sentencing made directly after.
We need it. We will. We'll all thanks we need it. We're there.
Okay.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
It's resolution. Yeah.
Can we get both of those, huh?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda is the WAFI RFPs.
Those were opened in my office on 3/9/21. There were only one, there was only one RFP turned in and that was for the east side of the county. Our police would all have that in your package. It was from ETC Business Services and the amount of $2,675.
It was on the upper side of the state home. Understanding there'd be an access point inside the building, one outside the building with a relay to an access point at the courthouse, whole building. And approximately 600 foot of range, whole access range from which access.
It says 600 feet in all directions. However, tree walls and other obstruction to due degree of security. And there was not, there was not an RFP turned in for the west side of the county in which I did have one of the providers to contact me and he said that he just could not get his bid specs in in the, in the time manner in which was reserved for the RFPs to come back. But he did say he would be interested if those RFPs were to go back out to be able to submit a bid on the west side of the county.
One ongoing issue up there is accessing Wi-Fi, same down here. We've talked about this for a couple of years. I know when we done the courthouse years ago, they put in an AP access point on the third floor, the second floor, one outside and then doing for the router. It was in the basement. And I think it's about $17, $300 at that time. $60, somewhere in the $60 at that time. That's all wired with access points. And I didn't really put all this equipment, which passed that. That was. Put the phone on this one, go up or down and then put it back out for him to park down here. Or we'll hook this one up or down and not go back out for him to park. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of different settings. You've got the next one, this one, this one, this one, these three. And then all the woods. You've got the fludge from, and we've got a lot of different bits. So, I mean, I don't, you know, I'd like to see if they have Polk County. I'd like to see if they have access.
I worked on this to get my people stuff. And I'm sorry that the west side didn't do it. But I mean, you guys give $10,000 to a show barn.
You've got Community Center. We don't have.
Yeah, but look at your health department. Look at ours.
I'd like a motion to approve here.
Second. Motion made by Pivenger, second by Davis. Any discussion?
I think the price is way too high. It's been $2,000, almost $2,700. So we can get Wi-Fi down to a courthouse?
Well, I think it's ridiculous. We give $10,000 to a show barn to fix it, but.
When I did, we'll relay from the pole. My understanding is now, I'm not, this is, my understanding is it, it will go to the courthouse and then extend 600 more from that access point.
For what reason?
Well, it'll cover the front areas of the fields, any events you have down there as well.
Yeah. And if we continue distance learning, because our kids aren't going to school, at least they can go over there and sit in the sunshine and do their homework.
And they could go to the library there too and do their homework.
That cuts off in the afternoon to when it's closed.
At 11:00 PM?
That's a, that's a secluded area, that for God. Matter of fact, it's secluded even during the daytime. And why in the world would you want to put Wi-Fi down there to have a bunch of people hanging out down there doing, no telling what?
Because they're gonna be there anyway doing ball games.
Just opening the door.
Practice. I mean, half of them have little kids that are practicing, so they're going to the ball field. There's not really service there. So they could do their homework. They could do their homework during ball games that they're waiting to go out and play.
If you got brothers or sisters playing ball and you're stuck there and you have to get home at night to do your homework, once you get home, most ballgames can run late.
Yeah. And there's lots of other playing.
You can go home after.
I mean, I would have to go home after ball games and try to do homework at 10, 11 o'clock at night and then get up at 5:30 the next morning to go to ball practice. Yes, I did choose to do that, but we didn't have access to a lot of stuff. So asking for internet is, just to help our kids, it's just a little bit so they could do their homework.
And with COVID, and I'm hoping COVID's over. Okay. Well, I know it's not over, but I'm hoping it's coming to an end.
Do you know why the library club started turning it off at 11:30?
Yeah, because there was no cops out there patrolling and they were doing stuff in the parking lot.
Okay. That's a good answer. That same thing's gonna be going on out there.
So you would rather our kids go sit in the car instead of sitting on the bleachers doing homework? Where there's nowhere to sit at the library. So you'd rather them just not, not do their homework until they go home. You would rather them not play sports. You'd rather them not go sit on the bleachers, have places to sit with each other to do homeworks together.
It's not our place to give the whole county to.
It's not our place to keep giving to a show barn either that we keep giving to, but we do.
It is, it is our place to provide everybody.
Not to support it like this.
That's a fact.
Well, our kids don't have a boys' and girls' club to go to in the afternoon either. Just roll call it.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Do you have a question? Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Woody?
No.
Next, we have our Justice Center Hot Water. Peter, Matt Brooks?
The sheriff called me. So the chairman of the building committee, the hot water heaters, I think, are, within just days ago, come out after all.
That's what I've been talking about.
This is, what's the second time, 14, I was just there now. 14 years, huh?
Yeah, give or take.
But I guess that's about the power for the coal, which that's about the length of. This is a specialty group that works on them. It's, I understand something, something that anybody can work on, is commercial or industrial hot water heaters. Cost to fix them is, or the further repairs is $27,993.
Is that, is that fix or replace on that, Brooks?
Uh, fixed.
So plus packs is in my head.
Freight packs, yeah. So yeah, it'll be $27,993 plus freight and tax.
Plus you projected, did you bring the source for this?
I guess the, what's the designated name of the justice center?
You said you're gonna use a designated revenue.
The designated revenue is just, gonna be, is that just?
34.50.
34.50, yes.
I make a motion to fix hot water heaters. Come from line 34.50, budget memo.
No, the number is 36.
36. And it goes into line 54110-338. And that's the maintenance for the Sheriff's Department.
Got one question.
We made 549 secretly.
54.
549.
54110.
Or something else.
Which question, Greg?
Did you make a motion on that, Brooks?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll see.
Motion made by Brooks, second by Pivenger. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I was just wondering, was this the only price that was got? I mean, is these the only people within 200 miles that work on these? Or, or I mean, is that, we just play off, that's okay, or what?
The sheriff told me this is the only one that was qualified to, to do this here, type work in the, in the area.
Okay.
I think they're familiar with it and they worked on it before.
Yeah.
Now, were they the originating company as well?
I'm not sure if they wanted to put it in or not. But I believe they want to rebuild the last time later.
Did they give a statement on their warranty on the parts or anything, Brooks? I didn't see.
I believe if I actually wanted to get some, I don't know if I put it in here. Whatever parts they buy, factory wound, they're trible to pluck. I seen that by factory wound.
Is it still operational?
I don't know if it's still.
I know it was operational. It was last time I was out there. I checked that out three years ago.
It was all solace system. It's the same song.
So.
It's a big system.
But it's a, it's a.
At all points, they find by four.
Pro call. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Harrison.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next, we have the Show Barn Election Commission and courtroom flooring.
I also put that on there from the building committee. The Show Barns, the rubber dress, the wiring and stuff, we're waiting on the grants. Election Commission, Dewey Sias who drew up a plan for the new carpet and, I think Chaz will come meet again. I ain't out there one day.
Did he ever come up, Fred?
He may.
The last time he came, would you have given our record?
Hopefully by next month, we'll be able to have some bid specs for that. Well, has, by next month, have some bid specs to maybe do RFPs on carpet and collection commission. And a new carpet in the courtrooms. I think Judge Townsend told us she decided it was fine and we just put that up. Oh, I didn't know you was here. Yep. We got books, new carpet in the courtrooms. So this is, we got RFP, carpet in the courtrooms. I'll make a motion for County Executive Patrick to put the RFPs in Polk County.
I'll second that.
For the new carpet in the courtrooms.
And we talked a little bit about that on, from a budget standpoint. We're looking at the expenditure on the new flooring coming from the reserve account. It can only be used for judicial, which is 34.510. And that was back here when this first started about a year ago with the auditor. Up here, I think, it's free still here?
Yeah. That's right.
You were in here when I asked.
I was.
On that. It should be doable, reusable from that camp. Minus any other trouble or anything kind of there for building repair and claim business account that's designated for that specific area. So the free up any other lines of money.
Judge Townsend, do you have that? RFP is.
I gave it to the chairwoman.
Everybody got a copy?
If I have it that way, I can use.
I made 15 copies. I'm shooting it out.
So Show Barn and Election Commission should be back on there next month. When they'll back the grant. Hope we'll have some bid specs for the Election Commission carpet next month.
Well, do you want to go ahead and give, do you want to go ahead and make a motion to allow the county executive to send out RFPs on that?
We don't got nothing drawn up yet. What to make with him, I took?
No, for the carpet.
Oh, for the carpet?
No, I'm, I'm talking about for the.
No, we'll do it next month. We got a lot more planned. It's pretty complicated. The election commission here. And we got to meet with him one more time. He's gonna get it wrapped down, but need to agree to him a bid specs. And we'll have him ready to go next month's meeting. It's too wet right now anyway.
Brooks made a motion for the RFPs for the carpet and Pivenger seconded. Do we have any discussion about that? Pro call. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trancom?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next, we have our ambulance committee report.
Who's your man?
Please.
Do you want to stand up? Karen, remember you go. Can you send the, before they give the RFP notice and thanks to Kevin Robinson, if they're solid copy now, is there any questions? It deals with sending through air contact hours and how they're handling.
Explain a little bit better what we've been doing and why.
Do you want to address any of it or?
Not this year, the question. Be glad to answer any.
All right. Just one. Are we filling the 72 hours?
Yes.
We, we are.
Yes.
What about the DEA group?
We have those same trucks.
You have them on the truck?
That is all worked out. Everything the DEA has done and those trucks are on the trucks.
Are there, is there any other equipment that, we have a waiver on right now that is not in?
No. No, we have everything that we're required to have.
Y'all are ALS?
Yes.
Certified, no waivers or anything?
Class A.
Class A? Class A? And you're completing the 72 hours?
Yes.
3.24 hour trucks?
Yes.
Which, what we said was 2.24s, 2.12s, the 72 contact areas. And y'all have done a review that showed that, that it's better off on both hands to?
Right now, with the way the car volume is being, we feel that that provides the most consistent coverage. You know, that is subject to change, you know, and we review frequently. And then, you know, we can come to y'all and say, hey, you know, we might need to do this. Make sure everything's good, you know, go from there. They did mention also, if we could continue to hire some more staff, we may, as the busy season starts, you know, the river and all that. Car volume is going up already a little bit, just running an extra 12-hour truck at least on weekends or something. The staff in the house, that would just be above the 72.
That's above the 72 contact?
Yeah. And that will be above and beyond that. It's not set stone, of course, yet, but that is something that we're looking at. It's not set stone, of course, yet, but that is something that we're looking at.
Any questions?
No need, not to call first care or start negotiating a time, and, uh, I don't hear a thing.
Next on our agenda is the food service bid notice from the sheriff's department. Um, it says, "In effort to ensure that we have the best service for our money, we are taking bids on the inmate food service for the jail. The current contract is running on a continuance, but is out of date. The bids are set to be out by April fifth at noon, open at thirteen hundred dollars. We hope to be able to make a recommendation to the commission in the April meeting."
And that's, uh, lady, talk with you on that, did the opening day, that's, and that's also the date set for the RFP on RFP flooring?
So that way, if anybody wants to attend, I know Walter usually pretty good at attending, and it worked out for Glenn to be there, but he's not going to get you all the information of RFPs.
Okay, next, we have our IDV board, um, appointments.
You all have the applicants that turned in the ID board, because in your packets, there are two vacancies on the ID board. There are both, both to serve the remainder of the terms, and both of these terms are for six years, which would expire in two thousand twenty-six.
Who come off of these?
Um, Alan Hanes and Tim Kaba. I think there was four that turned in. Four that got the turn. There were four applicants that turned in for those two positions.
I make a motion to approve county executive's haters to recommendation.
Second motion.
Ryan Phil, Josh Rowe.
And that expires when, oh, in twenty twenty-six, both of those terms were the six-year term, do you remember they are staggered terms?
Yeah.
And they will serve the remaining of that term.
So, do we even have anybody from District Three anywhere?
Nobody else in District Three turned in for that one.
But when the first one, the oldest expires?
Yes.
Whatever those? It'd be easy for us to put somebody out there, nurse box, give them back, you have somebody to fly.
Yes, we'll be accepting those here in just a couple of months, getting ready for those that'll be expiring in twenty twenty-two. I'm mistaken, there were some in twenty twenty, there are two-year, four-year, and six-year terms staggered for nine people.
Well, maybe, so y'all would encourage people to fly, and I think they do, when we do the next one in a couple of months, when there is one expired, we definitely need to make that a spot for somebody that needs it.
It needs to be, county, I mean, it needs to definitely have a bit of malpractice.
Next, second.
I'm saying, uh, would, thank you.
Question made by Brooks, second by Woody, any discussion? Pro call. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
And James Woody?
Yes.
Next, we have our nine-one-one committee for our two-year terms.
Yes, ma'am, there are two vacancies that have, that are occurring, have occurred in the nine-one-one board, and I'll kind of put Mike on the spot, Mike brought it to my attention earlier. If you look at this board, and this is one of those where I hope everybody realizes that it's, it is both counting, there are and there is another recommendation for an additional person in District Three on the nine-one-one board. Mike said that he thought it may be in the bylaws where it states it needs to be three and three, if that is the case, I will bring that back before this board. But based off the ones that did submit for that, for the nine-one-one board, you have my two recommendations, and there were three that did submit to that board. This is one of the vacancies was from the mayor, Jerry Stevens, and his passing, and so those that I have recommended are Ryan Qualls and Philip Green. And they will serve the remainder until twenty twenty-three of this time.
Mayor Stevens and two, that, uh, expired.
Ruth Patton.
Ruth Patton. There was another, I won't be on record for this, there was another applicant that turned in, but he did call into my office on Monday before these went, your packets on Wednesday, and he asked to be removed.
Uh, I'd like to know some, some kind of health issues, and, uh, requested first matter, their vast thoughts on that.
He said he had a whole lot going right now, and he would not be able to serve that, that one were the best of his ability.
Uh, when, when will these expire?
Twenty twenty-three, March first of twenty twenty-three, is from the resolution right now, actually, that, that I was, that was given to me from the nine-one-one board.
So that'll build the risk of this term?
Yes, sir. And then that will be back up again in twenty twenty. Ryan Qualls. And Philip Green.
May I ask you something? Do you know, I'm understanding that I can go ahead and contact Ryan Qualls if they vote, or if they agree with you?
Yeah, I know you all have a, if you still have an issue, is, uh, to try to get a quorum together, and that's, and that's another thing, especially with this nine-one-one board, they do an excellent job. But there are a lot of older ones that serve on this board that's been brought to my attention, and it's, to try to get enough to serve on a quorum, and it gets difficult at times. That's what Trig was asking in regards to, to be sure that once they are approved tonight, because there's some issues that they need to get resolved at the nine-one-one board ASAP.
Yes.
So who's your, who are your recommenders?
Ryan Qualls and Philip Green.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Ryan Qualls and Philip Green, nine-one-one, or four, them for the nine-one-one board, second.
Question made by Brooks, second by Pivenger, any discussion? Pro call. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next, we have our planning committee.
Yes, ma'am, the planning commission, the planning committee, I apologize, that was one that kind of slipped by me, get you safe through the COVID, but, um, Candy is the one that presented us with the resolution that was approved back years ago. There are three that are up for two-year terms, and it says the act expired in twenty twenty, but these will be the three to remain to go through this term. The three that I recommend are E. Wallace, Lester. Gary Silver, and Mark Bishop for the planning commission.
Make a motion, let's prove.
May I say something, question, please? I have a unique respect, it's because I worked with all of these, and we always make sure with that one for each district, with Pat, Ronnie, Dillard, just, just, Mark, and the first, and then, uh, Gary through the second. They're not always fair, but they're stepping forward, and I always know that are stepping forward, when the daylight's burning, you have to work. All three of these have applied again, uh, Ronnie has been on since twenty thirteen, um, Mark, I think, about five or six years, and then Gary about six. I think they do excellent job.
Yeah, because we're, if we do that recommendation, we're not losing one.
You still have two.
But we're losing these, could put another one for now.
And I, I understand that, but also whenever I have the South Texas Tennessee Development, they can contact me, because there are times where it's hard for you all to have a quorum, whenever attendance is not met. So that was how come that I did recommend the three that I recommended.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Cheryl, you were.
Cheryl Turner was filled by Jason Page's back.
When she moved?
When she moved two, three years ago.
Okay, but her name was on this, was it?
Correct, that was, and as I said, that was a document that was presented from Candy to my office, and I guess that name just wasn't changed.
Jason's getting sales since his successor?
Yes, he can still.
So I'm taking it that just because he works, we're just going to replace him?
No, I didn't say that, I said because there's times where that board meets and there's just enough for a quorum. And whenever it been brought to my attention by an outside agency, that there's times where there's just enough for a quorum, and if something was to happen, then that board would be able to meet. If there's not a quorum present, and if you've got things that need to go before the planning commission, before they proceed pardon.
Do you think these are good ones, though?
Ones on the list? I do, because I have worked with them, uh, before, all of them were refined, all of them wanted to live with me, and it's hard to get people to work on a board, and they are interested. Uh, Mark Bishop, I know that you recommended him, but, you know, the pledge James Darren did about the, uh, regulations, because he had bridle, uh, Ronnie Dillard, he has the excavating, uh, business, and he can tell us about roads and, you know, different ways, but it's always scary, but each brings something unique to the field.
Pro call.
Whoa, we got someone right there.
Except my recommendation, or the three that I recommended.
Did you say made a motion, though? Did I make a motion?
Now Silver's a bishop, are the two of them there?
Yes, they are on there currently, and Mr. Dillard is on there currently, this is, these terms expired in July twenty-two, and they're two-year terms, which actually comes up again in July twenty-two.
Tom Sherman, I, I might, I'm gonna ask a question, please. I think we need one for District Three on that board.
The people, I mean, I agree, and, uh, we got two, the people have got to start.
I'm tired of being left out.
Have nobody applied, you see the paper? Like on the last, like on the IDV board, we can't point people that don't apply, you know, nobody's been left out. And the reason I take issue with that, because I have always, for sixteen years, everybody knows me, I've been over backwards working with these things, you know, you check my history, but, you know, y'all got to get out of there, uh, encourage people to apply.
Ronnie Dillard applied, he sent it to me, and I turned it in, he's from the third district.
Okay, but back, back to the ID board, I would have gladly, have voted for one, from up there tonight, had somebody applied, make yourself a guy.
Pro call. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
I think we need to break them up. What do we love now?
We have to do the pro call.
So you're saying, the way from the third district, the reason you don't want to suggest them is because they work, and they can't be at all meetings? Well, that happens to everybody on.
We are pro call. Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Pass.
John Pivenger?
Pass.
Samantha Trenton?
Now.
Yes.
Three pass, three, I don't know.
Make a motion to vote on them independently of each other? Make a request to vote on the independent, about the three nominations, uh, independent vote on all three.
Want this just goes next?
We can lock two, at least two in, or three in, or one in, possibly, and they'll have a.
The ones on there competing third next month, we'll figure it out.
That's, that's true.
Will you have representation except for the ones that are on there, except for the third district, correct? I mean, the one from third district is still on there, but we've got to vote on him to keep him on there, and then?
Next one.
Mark would second this.
Or the one from down here.
And then who's on first district?
Mark.
Mark's on first, who's on sixth?
Gary's.
He's on, he's on sixth?
Yeah.
Who's on second district?
Who's in second?
Uh, Gary's.
Who's in? Okay.
How he's on first? So we'll get, it's the third chart district, you know, is that not fixed up? So we need to type one, do we get one?
Pro call.
That's right. Mark, we don't, we don't vote on the nominations.
If you want to vote on them independently, like I said, on those three nominations.
See if I don't make a motion to leave the planning board as is? I'll probably move, leave, leave my ass.
Well, I'm in, but it's nobody, but.
Took their scent five thousand.
If what you're not voting for is just his recommendation? Then we didn't recognize him by the third district.
Not, not on this board for this time, no, sir.
One.
Because the one applicant that was serving on for District Three, whenever I had an outside source that contacted me in regards to non-attendance, and so when we sent those out, it was my recommendation for the three that I recommended.
All three from down here.
You also have two others that are from District Three that currently serve on it. You have four that serve from third district on the nine-one-one.
We bought and paid for it, too. Our end of account with third district bought and paid for the nine-one-one system years ago. And slowly but surely.
We're not, we're not, no, it's very evident.
I'm just, we're questioning, we vote on them, and whichever wants to get our votes, go on, whichever wants to don't, we can recommend next month, we'll go to this open position. Or we're just making a recommendation tonight, that's, that's a, the county executive, that, that's.
Well, Harry, think something, I got some room.
I make a motion that we table it till next month, and ask the county executive to bring us that attendance record, so we can see for ourselves. That's second motion.
Question made by Escott, second by Woody, any more discussion? Pro call. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Pro call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
I make a motion to spend rules.
For what?
Concerning the firehouse, Oakwood Fire.
I'll say the motion.
Would that be a call on it?
Yes.
Pro call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes. Yes.
I forgot to put, the question, send out RFPs, have executive haters too, for the concrete and doors, at the Oakwood Fire Hall this month. I'll bring them soon, tomorrow, we've got the bid specs rolled up, did he make, email them, you're up? He'll email them, I'll bring you a copy.
I'll say the motion.
We do RFPs for the finished Oakwood Fire. I've got to put it on the gym, cause.
You put it same day?
Good excuse for it.
Same day as other open experts?
That'd be okay.
Yep, that way we'll do it all at one time. Because it's hard to get people there during the day.
I say the motion.
Take out RFPs for. People do RFPs for Oakwood Fire, for the concrete and doors.
Greg Brooks?
Second by Pivenger?
Pro call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
D.B.S. Jones? Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Pivenger?
Yes.
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 Thank y'all for doing that, I did get it put on the gym and.